Call to order the recess meeting for Wednesday, May 29th. This is a big one. It's our budget meeting. So I'm excited to see what we have in store for us today. Do we have a motion to receive and file the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All business item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Rumke of Kentucky, Inc., to Provide a Public Grock Box Recycling Service for a Period of Three Years in the Amount of $250 per Box Per Month to be Emptied a Minimum of Two Times Per Week for the Department of Public Services Division of Sanitation.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating, Inc., for the Chestnut Drive Sanitary Sewer and Waterline Replacement Project in the Amount of $383,953 for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the Revised Job Description for the Position of Alcoholic Beverage Control Administrator in the Department of Risk Management of the Classification and Compensation Plan as Adopted by Ordinance Number 31, Series of 2023 as previously amended.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Engagement Letter with Frost Brown Todd Attorneys to Provide Legal Services in Connection with a Conference Center to be Located in Said City for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda?
A Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting, Authorizing, and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda for the Recess Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of May 29th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And next is the FY '25 Budget Work Session.
All right. Turn it over to the City Manager.
So just want to start off always mainly for the public, because I know the mayor, commissioners, and staff understand this process, but the process for the FY '25 budgets really began in earnest when worksheets were turned in by the directors in the January, February timeframe. We conduct our first budget work session with the BOC on the 22nd of February after a scheduled BOC meeting in the same chambers. Guidance, broad guidance at the time included focus on fiscal discipline or on in-place projects, specifically public safety utilities, parks, lighted properties, parentheses, CDVG, and the wastewater treatment plant. There was specific guidance to allocate $100,000 to help customers with utility bills and discuss the timeline which we're actually living today. There have been many, many changes to the budget worksheets since they originally turned into finance in January. Numerous and productive meetings between the directors and finance to fine-tune those requests. There's always discussions that go on on what's uber critical and what's not. Do want to remind the mayor and commissioners that we do ask the, or I ask the directors to always put in everything that they think they want or need in those two categories. And those are the discussions that go on with finance when the first iterating occurs with this. Finance met with, Finance and I met a few times a few weeks ago, discussed all the funds and what was requested and budgeted. I think this is a really solid budget based on that discussion, and I'm really looking forward to the presentation that finance is going to give today.
Okay. Finance ready?
Finance is ready.
Ready as you'll ever be?
You guys have, should have two books.
We do.
Yes, sir.
One was a large black book and a small red book. The black book is, has some details by line items, but it counts. And the red book will be summarizing the black book and the part will be reviewed directly. In crafting this budget, the city remains committed to existing service levels. Citywide, the revenue overall of the city is projected minimal or neutral growth. Citywide expense, city management continues to invest in capital, downtown streetscape, city paving and sidewalks, police vehicles, fire engine, fire aerial truck, wastewater truck, water lines, and most important, human capital. As we move forward, this budget attempts to meet the short and near-term needs of our city. I want to thank the City City Commission, the City Manager, department heads, and finance staff who helped create this budget process. The commitment is what makes our city strong, and together we will continue to build a city that we are all proud to call home. If you turn to your red book, page one, just a few data points. The city, as we keep the grant fundings and all this, we're up to 22 funds citywide with two accounts that account for the city's debt. Fifty-seven departments.
We used to have 19 funds. What did we?
We used to have a lot less than that.
Yeah, we had 19 funds, and now we've got, what are the other?
We're up to 22. And within that, we have 1,650 accounts. That'd be different light items, light carts, and tools, equipment, food, publications, and as such. And we've had quite a half million transactions so far this year. Ask General Infra and stuff like that.
We've added a state TIF, a brownfield grant, and we've added a conference center.
So if you turn to page one, the very top, we'll express this number. It's 120.6 million is the 25 proposed budget. It's net of inter-fund transfer. Contrast that with our current budget of 96.3. It gives a difference of $24 million and $300,000. The primary driver on those two is the wastewater treatment plant, 22 million, and the conference center at 12.5. Next is our personnel cost. Personnel cost, again, citywide, is 36.6 million or 30.4% of our budget. Prior year, it was 35.3. This closed budget does have a COLA of 4.6%, and that would equate to 1.2 million. I'd also point out that this budget has included additional three firefighters at $377,517. And internally, I mean, I think we have a place, or you know, someone, a couple areas that we can find this with. One of them would be, this will reduce unscheduled overtime. That's about $177,000. And the Kentucky retirement system, the rates have went down. So just within a fire department alone, it's over $200,000 reduction. So that would be our rate payer, payer for this.
I think the commission is encouraged by the fact that you all have made an effort to find a way to make this possible for our fire department. I think it's important to this commission, public safety is, and not just with fire, but we want more police on the streets too. So anything we can do to strengthen both of those departments, we're always eager to assist if we can, and I think financially, if we can do this, it's great.
Thanks, sir. Turn to page two real quick.
Real quick, so the COLA of 4.6. Last year, it was 5.1, I believe. And so, you know, remember also the Baker Tilly adjustment last year. I mean, that was, so, yeah, it's slightly lower than what it was, but, I mean, we took a big step with the Baker Tilly as well. What are your thoughts?
I think worth noting is, as Tony Michelle put in here, that is the cost of labor, and that is from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. So that wasn't, it's just a direct line for that, and it is in line with the Baker Tilly to continue to try to keep our minimum pay with the cost of labor in the area.
I don't know if it's in the DLS dot gov, and it's in the some category, state and local.
Governments.
Government. Yeah. Excuse me. Turn to page two. It's Kentucky Retirement. It says it's 6.2 million or 5.2% of the budget. That is a reduction of $578,482 from the previous year. And that's obviously a trend that's going down. I hope it continues, especially a lot of the state adopting House Goal 551 that creates an excise tax on sports betting, as the state has indicated they're going to put in the Kentucky retirement systems as well as gaming addiction programs. So I'm pretty excited about that. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that it won't have any more increase in Kentucky retirement, at least stabilize.
That'd be great.
Or whatever. So I thought that was important to point out. Employee healthcare fund, it just continued to stabilize. We're transferring over 19,500 for each employee. We're looking, projecting that the healthcare fund will come in around about 5.9 million or 4.8% of our total budget.
Has healthcare increased?
No, we've not increased it for, I don't know, maybe four years, something like that.
And right now, overall, it's down. There's just a, there's about eight that are really high. But overall, we've done a well job managing it. HR has done a good job managing it.
Great. And the other thing, I think we want to make sure, benefits are important to our workers, and to make sure that the health insurance program that we do offer is competitive and continues to offer as much as they need, because we want to keep our employees. I think this year has proven how valuable they are with some of the awards that we've received, and we want to do all that we can to keep them from going anywhere.
HR is currently looking at improving our vision plan where it pays more out-of-pocket for glasses and contacts for employees. So they've been working hard to try to work out a plan for that, yes.
Good, good.
That's a major recruitment tool.
Yes.
Because I know in the private world, things aren't going well.
No, no, the opposite direction, yeah.
Yeah. No, we're very proud of that. I'm sure you all know that we are self-insured.
Oh, yeah.
And that helps a lot.
And correct me if I'm wrong, is this 19.5 down?
We did 19.75.
I thought it used to be third, was it not 30?
It was, it was in the twenties, and then it went to 19.750, and then last year, we did 19.5, and this year, we're doing 19.5.
Okay.
Yeah. And I've got a little bit of historical trend. If you look at FY '19, the healthcare cost was over 7 million. Twenty, 5.95. Fiscal year '21 was 3.72. And then it goes up back to 5.11. FY '23, 5.15. So it is.
So you're right, it is stabilizing. Okay.
It is.
The next item, again, this is citywide debt. We said 29.4 million, or just 2.9% of our total budget. The annual debt service is $3,475. It's worth noting that we paid off the 23, excuse me, 2013 revenue bonds, loan radio meters, and KIA loan for a total of 1.69 million.
So, sorry.
The per capita debt is $1,394. That's down from the prior year. Fiscal year '23, $1,590.
Great, good.
Just running down, but that's a good metric. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So, just as you said, total debt down, I think we're at 36 million last year, according to the prior numbers in the big book.
Yes.
We're at 29 million in this budget, so that's great. So per capita debt, I think there's value in looking at not just prior, and you all have, God knows you have enough, in looking at prior year versus current year. I do a little, little bit of timeline, so 2019 per capita debt, so just explain that, anybody that's watching here might not know. So our total debt, so $29 million dispersed among all the citizens, right? That's per capita debt. So 2019, it was $2,153 per capita. 2021, 1,715, and then this year, it's 1,394. So that's a really good way to show.
Yeah, that's great.
That that debt level, and by the way, I think, we've talked about this before, but I think 10% is the limit, state by state law. But, and that's assessed by property values overall, which is like a million dollars.
You're correct, they take the assessment, but he's saying, I think 10% of that isn't mine.
Right. So the overall message there is, that's obviously a very good metric.
We're working down that debt very well.
I'm sure. Turn over to page three real quick. We'll go to the capital investments. It's 59.2 million, 49.1% of the budget. You have a listing of the capital and stuff right below that. I won't go through and read them to you, because we will actually unpack each of them in the fund that they're applicable to. Federal and state grant funding sets at 18.3 million or 14% of our budget. Some of them can be viewed as an annual grant for the conference center, the Section Eight voucher program of 4.4 million, wastewater treatment plant of 4 million, the FTA federal grant to wind the bus system of 1.1 million. That's pretty consistent with prior year. The prior year was 17.4 million. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob, and she's going to take you up to the funds.
If you turn to page four, we'll go with the general fund. The general fund is the primary government operating fund of the city. It is used to account for all financial resources except those required to be accounted for in other funds. They include general government, finance, public services, community and economic development, police, fire, and engineering. This year's budget for the general fund is 32.6 million. And of the revenues, five main accounts make up over 8% of the general fund revenue. Property taxes, fiscal year '25 budget is 2.9 million. Insurance premium tax, fiscal year '25 budget is 5 million. Business license and net profit, fiscal year '25 budget is 2.4 million. Off-pation license fee, fiscal year '25 budget is 14 million. And garbage fees, fiscal year '25 is 2.6 million. If you can go to page five.
I'd point out on O L F, that we're still seeing some growth in that. It's primarily comes from a largest nonprofit. It's slowing down a little bit, but we are still seeing quite a bit of growth. But it's a very positive trend, and I expect it to go well once they complete construction.
Another one that, if you look over five, six years, has seen, has seen significant growth, if you look at the budgets from five, six years ago.
Yeah, like doubled.
Yeah.
It's doubled.
Page five. The fiscal year '25 fund balance with the general fund is 6.8 million unrestricted. Debt is 10.9 million, with the debt service payments this year of 1.7 million. Sale re-benefits for fiscal year '25 budget are 22.6 million. Operating expenditures, 5.7 million. Capital outlay projects are 6.3 million, and these projects will individually be listed into the special improvement fund. If you can turn to page six.
One question, Rob. The two GO bonds, what were those for, the 2015 and the 2021?
The 2015 is for Melody Mountain.
So that was page one?
Yes.
And what's the 2021?
Where we paid off the police station, and we did the condo projects downtown.
I guess.
Can you run page six?
Those first two on that, I mean, just rough math looking at that, if we're close to those being paid off?
Um, yes, we are closer to both of those being paid off. I can give you the exact date.
No, that's, that's fine.
It's usually, I think 2025 is the date for the first Melody Mountain issue.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, sold that in the big book.
It was possibly over two.
Yeah. Yeah. It's good news.
Very good news.
Due since '80s are budgeted at 189,000. Paying is budgeted at 1.1 million, but citywide, it is 1.6 million. Demolitions are budgeted at 200,000.
The next fund is our Tax Increment Finance Fund. It's on page seven. This is the district that we created downtown when we helped the hotel. The fund balance is negative 1.3 million. The debt is 3.4 million with debt service payments of 299,450. There are no salaries or operating expenses or capital outlay in this fund. The revenues are insufficient to cover expenditures. There's a deficit of $166,028. The tax increment finance fund liability to the general fund is 1.2 million. We have real property tax assessments of 35.6 million in the TIF district. On page eight is the State TIF Fund. This is one of our new funds, and it accounts for the annual increment of the This is one of our new funds, and it accounts for the annual increment of the Ashland Plaza redevelopment TIF. The, we basically get a percentage of the growth from sales use and property taxes from the state. These funds will be utilized in the conference center parking and other capital redevelopment in the area. The next, an interesting thing Catherine has submitted next year, the tax receipts in the district have went up by six hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and eight dollars for the state from comparison to twenty eighteen. So the city will get forty-five percent and will get two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of that from the state TIF.
Ah.
That will come to us next year.
That's good news.
On page nine
Yeah, something like that.
Is a brown filled grant fund, and the Department of Community and Economic Development applied for some EPA funds to help safely assess, clean, and reuse some contaminated properties to put them back where we can do some economic development. There's currently, they are working on eleven properties within town. Currently, Jean Jackson and a property on Twenty-Ninth Street is the current ones that they are working on. So that's a new fund with a budget of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Page ten is the municipal aid road fund. This is the MAP funds that we collected from the state by the excess tax on motor fuels and allocates to the cities based on population and miles of paved streets. Next year's budget is proposed at five twenty-nine, twenty-five. This fund has a fund balance of seventy-one, three fifty-four. We have approximate miles of paved road, three hundred. In fiscal year twenty-three, we paved ninety-seven thousand, one hundred feet of roads. And on our list for fiscal year twenty-four, we're projected to pave forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine feet of roads. An interesting statistic, you all have put a lot of investment in paving citywide. On the MAP funds for the last four years, we put one point seven million on new paved roads. And citywide, we've done five point six million dollars of paving.
Wow, that's great.
So. The next fund is on page eleven, is the community development block grant fund. This accounts for the money we receive from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Our grant application, allocation each year is about five hundred and fifteen thousand. So we have some carryover funds, which makes our budget one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand. This fund has a fund balance of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Salary and benefits are one twenty-nine, two eleven. Operating expenditures, twenty-eight thousand, four ninety-seven. And total projects that we have are one million, one ninety-one, nine oh five with expenses. On page twelve, we outline the action plan that community development has done for the year. Administrative costs are a hundred thousand. We're at the point where we have maxed out the administrative costs for this fund. We, we also have administrative costs, that's a project. We do code enforcement in low mod income areas for fifty-seven, seven oh eight. We help various emergency shelters and places with reimbursement for utilities and supplies. We're doing a major rehab of the senior center for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. It'll actually do a storefront rehabilitation. We also, to continue your guys' focus on reducing slum and black property throughout town, we're going to use a hundred thousand of our CBG funds to actually, you know, increase slum and rot reduction. We're doing a major rehab of Salvation Army. We're going to rehab their lobby, put in new flooring, fencing, and kitchen for them. And sidewalk program, we're going to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of sidewalks in Ashland.
That's good news, too.
Yeah. Any questions, or?
What was the amount on that Salvation Army rehab?
Four hundred and nine thousand. The next fund is the ARPA fund. On page thirteen, the ARPA fund is the city received American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government. You all chose to put all the funds in infrastructure. We have twelve million, four hundred and fifteen thousand budgeted next year. But while we have taken time to engineer and get these projects forward, we have invested the money. And we've projected with, between fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-five, we think our investment income is going to be about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Fantastic.
I want to say kudos to you all for doing such a great job with managing that money. That's huge.
So with, with that, we have actually, you all already donated a hundred thousand to the Highlands in the previous fiscal year with that interest income from the ARPA money. And next year, you all have chosen to do a utility bill assistance program for a hundred and fifty thousand, so to help people with their utility bills. And this year, we have chosen the recreation contributions. You're all support of Summer Motion and Pub Landing for ninety thousand. We're going to use all this interest income instead of general funds next year.
Great.
And then we're going to do concrete and site prep work for the World War II memorial for not, sixty thousand. So that's all going to come out of interest income that we have earned on our ARPA funds. The feds let you use that interest income for any city project that you want to do.
That interest income is done, right? It won't, because do we have, that fund has to be used by a certain time?
The, yes. Everything has to be under contract by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and all projects have to be completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. We meet frequently to see what the progress are on these projects. Some of the neat things that we are doing, we've actually going to do some stormwater and some more work over at Pollard to finish out phase four of Pollard. We're doing the sidewalk and the paving work out of the capital purchase improvement fund, but the drainage and, and we're going to fix some concrete structures over in Pollard. Between the utilities, the ARPA money that we have budgeted in the phase four that we have budgeted, you all have put three point seven million dollars in the Pollard Dixon area neighborhood over the last few years, so.
And just for clarification, that is not downtown?
No, it is not downtown.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. As we were, you know, going through this, I thought that was a very interesting statistic, how much we have allocated to that. Some of the other projects that we are doing is, we're doing some tank rehabs, DeBord Hill and Fifty-Fifth Street. We're doing some pump station rehabs for Bogus Drive, Florida Street, and Johnson Fork for one point eight million for the three. We also have four hundred thousand dollars worth of grant money in the utility fund. We'll go towards this. But we also, with the, with the rest of the ARPA money, you all have put money in the utility fund towards water projects. You all have done water projects at the water plant, and you all have allocated a million dollars for water lines. So we have taken the ARPA money to fix our sewerage infrastructure. And a big part of the sewer infrastructure, we're doing some mechanical bar screens at Robert's Drive at one point three million. We're doing some line relays, and we're doing two million dollars worth of lining projects of sewer lines. So we're, we have hit, we started on water, we're, we're on one sewer lawn projects now. And the last project of this of notable is, we are going to buy some equipment for our sewer treatment plant that we can buy ahead of time of construction. And we're going to put three and a half million dollars down on this equipment that we're going to purchase for the sewer treatment plant, which will help us reduce the costs because we will have to borrow less money. So we're going to use some of the federal funding towards that. That's a change that we've had from last year.
I just want to say again, and we've said this before, this stuff's not sexy, but it's so important. It is so important for everyday life here and, and what we, you know, are charged to do for citizens, so it's a great job, Commissioner.
If I can point out one other thing that Michelle is, it's a little bit more subtle, but that buy head was also critical for lead time on key components of the wastewater treatment plant. So, again, thanks to Tony, Michelle, the finance staff and engineering, because, and there was a lot of work in with Strand, the contractor that's doing that. So it worked on many different levels. One, to get those key components that we're going to take up to, I think it was eight to twelve months to get, and so those were ordered. I think Kia had a part of approving that, too, is that correct?
The what?
Was Kia involved with allowing us to do that, or no? Okay, so, but anyway, the buy head is really critical to the stay on timeline at the wastewater treatment plant.
And I think it's important to mention the bond in twenty twenty-one, the mayor called it the quality of life bond.
Yeah.
You know, that's how we did the parks improvements and playgrounds and all of that. That's, that also helped, in my opinion, in us being able to dedicate all of this ARPA funding
Absolutely.
To infrastructure, because obviously, parks are very important to my family. But being able to dedicate all that money to infrastructure was great, and, and we were able to do that because we took care of other very important things with that bond, and it was low, it was a low interest bond.
And we, it was so low interest, we paid off the police department, and a lot of the money that was being able to put in the parks was from the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of interest savings.
Yeah, when somebody gives me like thirty seconds to explain the last four years or so, those are the two things I talk about.
Yeah.
The next fund is on page fifteen. It's the conference center grant fund. It's one of the funds that we've added to the conference center. This is a special revenue fund, so anytime that you have a grant, it has to be in a special revenue fund. You'll also see another conference center fund, which is the new one. It's a million dollars, it's the Amplor grant. This grant is to do with the engineering and design for a conference center and parking garage facility on here. So, page sixteen is the opioid settlement fund. The city through a class action lawsuit was given funds to help combat opioid dependency. The city sought competitive proposals for disposition of these funds to help with opioid dependency, and they range from, you know, helping people with housing, job training, there's a large things. These funds have restrictions, it's also a special revenue fund. It, it, in some ways, we also did some education on opioids, drug take-back programs, and detox services. Four hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars is budgeted to give out next year, and I think it's a ten-year of some of these settlements, so this will go on for a while. The next fund is on page seventeen. Is the section eight voucher fund, fund two fifty, and it is four point four million dollars worth of revenue and four point five million dollars worth of expenses. This fund has insufficient revenue to meet expenses. I know we discussed last year, we are spending more for administration than we are getting from the feds, so we have another hundred thousand dollars that we are going to have to fund out of the general fund to help meet expenses for this fund. This salary and benefits are four twelve, eight thirty-two. Operating expenditures are ninety thousand, one ten. Housing assistance payments are three point nine million. VASH vouchers are eighty-six, eight thirty-four. That's a good program that we have to help veterans with housing. We're currently serving five hundred and thirty-eight families in Boyd County and an average cost per unit of five hundred and eighty dollars. Administrative fees are sixty-five point eleven per unit, per month for program administrative cost.
What's the solution for solving that overage?
Reducing manpower.
Which we can't do if we're helping that many people. I think, I think it's one of those situations where that's a service we provide to the people who live here and we just.
Yeah, and I mean, overall, we're talking what, four point four and four point five. Obviously, none of us like to be in the rat on something like that, but arguably, one of the most important funds for, for housing people.
Yeah.
Last year, a question.
Yeah.
I could add, an item that we approved in the last commission meeting was an application to apply for VASH funds, and that should bring a significant increase in our administrative fees as well. But we don't know what that would be yet, but we'll report back when we, if, if we're over, we'll go pretty good about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I know I asked this question last year, and I honestly can't remember the answer. We help people find housing even outside of the city of Ashland, within the, in the county, correct?
Yes.
Where did we get on the, on, and I know I asked this last year, do we receive any assistance from the county in order to house these people in the county toward administrate? We don't? Okay. That would be an avenue as well.
Before we get too far from the opioid, if I could step back, and if I missed Michelle saying this, we, we have approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to what we have, and in the very near future, we're going to reopen the request for proposals to the community again. We'll try to, we did get some criticism that it wasn't publicized enough, so we'll get with the paper to see if they can run something on that, maybe what the other funds that we, that you all allocated to different organizations, what they've done. I know people come in here and brief you all on a regular basis during the B O C meetings, but try to calculate, or excuse me, capture the things that they've utilized those funds for, those altruistic organizations, and open up the other four hundred, four hundred thousand plus. And I, are we aware that anymore is going to come in at this time, or do we think that's it?
I think there's still potential for.
Um, yeah, we've hit the pharmacies now, they're so, I don't know exactly when they'll be in, but if you go to KLC website, it shows like how much each different pharmacy will give to the city of Ashland.
Okay. So what, once we're comfortable that we've, because what we don't want to do is open it up, and then maybe somebody, if we'd had another fifty thousand dollars, could have approved something. We'll go through the same process, there's a committee that will go through those RFPs, make a recommendation to you all. If you all recall, last time you did that, you made some fine-tuned changes on the recommendations that came from the committee, so we intend to do that same process in the near future.
Back to section eight real quick, I wonder if KLC could help with looking at, we're not the only city that facilitates section eight for other counties.
Actually, there's two in Kentucky.
Okay, just kidding.
Yeah, there's two. Most of them are separate agencies, they, they work outside the realm of cities, and so they manage themselves with their administrative fees. So we, us and I think another Kentucky city, or Covington owns Pearl, I don't know.
Are, are these people in Ashland to locate to the county, or?
We are actually, they manage, they do inspections and manage countywide, not only in, you know, Boyd County, Ashland, Westwood, everywhere, so.
Didn't know that.
So. On page eighteen is the flood wall operating fund. The flood wall operating fund is, counts for the maintenance of Ashland's flood wall. Property taxes assessed on property in this district. The flood wall has six pump stations, twenty-three pumps, approximately fourteen thousand feet of concrete wall and eight hundred feet of earth levy. The budget is three twenty-seven, four hundred and eighty. We have a fund balance of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Salaries, one ninety-three, eight fifty-five. Operating expenditures, one twenty-three, six twenty-five. And we have capital outlay to do a roof repair on the Fifteenth Street gatehouse. There was only, there was a capital project they requested in here to do a backup generator, which I think they estimated the cost to be three hundred thousand. We're going to see grant funding to see if we can pay for that. On page nineteen is the utility fund. The utility fund has a budget of forty-five million, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, three seventeen, and revenues of seventy-one million, one sixty-three, four eighty-seven. We have loan proceeds from KIA of forty-four million, that's what increases this. The big project that we are focusing on, of course, is our sewer treatment plant. And the utility fund has a current unrestricted fund balance of a negative two and a half million. We are currently working on building up our are currently working on building up our reserves. It has debt of 15 million, an unfunded utility pension liability of 4.9 million. We're putting 554,000 towards that every year. Salary and benefits of 10.8 million. Operating expenditures of 8.6 million. Capital outlay of 26,494,130. And we've got $12 million worth of additional utility projects that were filled, funding with ARPA funds. The retirement is 1.2 million. The utility rate modifications are in here for the sewer treatment plant. We are also allocating of the program that's going to be paid with ARPA funds, 150,000 for utility bill assistance. And we'll work out features for that in the months to come. The utility has some unclassified capital projects. We're going to do some work to the city building. We're going to work on a heating and air system. And we're going to phase it in. We anticipate the cost to be a million dollars. So we're going to phase it in over two years. The utility fund will pay half the cost. The general fund will pay half the cost. So we anticipate spending $200,000 out of utility fund next year for this project. We're going to do some rehab to the city building entrances, the 17th Street entrance and fire escape. We have budgeted 550,000 in both funds, 275,000 towards the entrance and fire escape. We're going to replace the existing lettering on the Greenhaven 17th Street entrance for a total of $20,000. $10,000 we funded with the utility fund. On page 21, we are doing some capital projects. Some of note is the lead service line identification program, $874,130. If y'all remember, we got a forgivable loan for that. So all costs for that will be.
Potentially forgiven.
Will be forgiven by, it's 100% by the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority. So to, to get into EPA compliance on the new reg, we actually received funds to pay for that 100%. The pump rehab, three, 400,000. It's over here in the utility fund. It's actually 1.8 million is total. But we're going to pay for the rest with ARPA funds. But we got a KIA grant to match the ARPA funds. So this will be 100% grant funded.
Wow.
And the, per year, all instruction, about been five, six years, we've allocated another million dollars to water main replacements.
And so, just to recap that story, so was it 2017, 2018, maybe we started budgeting for replacements, right?
Yes.
And so that's when the priority list was developed and has worked through that.
Just to remind you, the Blue Water List had asked for a lot more. And in those costs, it wasn't affordable, what we could do at the time. What has happened over the last couple of years is the priority list for the areas with the highest breaks. To be blunt, our breaks per 100 miles per year has not gone down. It's still in the 80s. But what you do see is, for example, the work that was done on Highway 23, 27, 2018, we had a break there that 5,000 to 7,000 customers lost water for multiple days. We had a similar break last year, and I think the max was 35 people were without water. This had to do with all the line replacing we did from the board down up to 29. So that, that's all worked out. The entire goal is that if we can't reduce those breaks per mile per year, which frankly is just unaffordable, to get down to 14, which is a recommendation.
3.4 was the recommendation, 3.2, 3.4 was the recommendation from?
It's 2% at, 2% lines every year, which would have cost us then 2.3 million dollars a year.
Yeah.
Five million now.
Probably five million.
I mean, it'd be insane. So we don't have that money to do that. But I'm very comfortable with the breaks that we have are less impactful on the community as a whole, because we're getting after the lines that have the most impact. So I think that's a responsible way to go about it.
And the best part of that, we did that with competing for KIA funds.
Exactly.
So we, we were able, we did the million. We had the 1.5 million KIA funds. And we also on Oakview, we've actually applied for some federal funding next year to get the main water line over there. So the big ones, if we are awarded the federal funding for Oakview, most of it, we were able to do with actually applying for federal funding.
It's that 3.9, Michelle.
One of the, the things, Josh, we did when our, when I came on as a commissioner, was I advocated for capital projects.
Yes.
Committee. And with that, each of our commissioners are able to participate. And we can focus on the needs as with department heads. And I think one of the things we talked about initially was OPI road.
Yes.
So to hear that actually being on, on the schedule now is really heartening to me as I leave, knowing that we're going to get it taken care of.
It, it takes time to sometimes get to these places. We've applied for the 3.9 with the feds. The information that you provided us with the new state grant funding program, we're actually can apply for the 20% match for that. So that funding program that we did the training on will be an additional 780,000. If we're awarded the federal money, we're competing for state money to make the match to it. So we, we're hitting that, but we're doing it with grant opportunities.
Those are people's money.
Are still being.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the breaks, the breaks number, I don't know that that's as good a metric as the action item list of the priority list.
Yeah.
How much we're covering that. To me, that's, that's something I'm more interested in, to me.
You can hear in this discussion, it's, it's getting the, the big impact lines, which has the best impact on our community. And with fully, full transparency, there's going to be something that comes up we didn't predict. It'll break somewhere. And we'll deal with that as we need to. We're talking replacement, not repair right now. That's the gist, gist of this conversation. But I personally, I think I speak for Mark and Steve also, that I think I'm very confident with the approach to how we triage the lines and what we're getting after. Again, like Michelle said, getting the OPM for other people's money to get this done for the feds. Free chicken.
I think another important piece to this conversation is talking about metrics and how we're measuring this progress is the amount of water we produce versus what we sell and the difference in what it used to be.
Yeah.
Prior to 2017 and now.
And it wasn't always measurable.
Right. But we didn't know, we didn't know where the water was going.
Right.
And we're still making progress in that, in that area. But we're getting better.
But remind us again how many miles of water lines we have, because it's all old.
Michelle, that's a metric you've used somewhere.
Yes.
In your financial report, I think, as I've even seen that, or maybe wrong.
Yeah.
Two over 300 miles.
Three hundred miles. So we know it's all over an old town. So it's all old, but doing, I think we're doing the right thing. Yeah.
And just since we're talking about it, again, the original cast iron, people assume that that's the worst line. It's not.
It's not, yes.
It's that galvanized, it's really kicking our butts. And the galvanized are those, you know, three quarter inch and the two inch lines that got put in. So that's why, that number, I agree with you. It's not a great metric, but it's just something that it was a key part of the Blue Water Study. But again, reducing the impact on the most customers that we're trying to get after.
How much to date have we replaced?
To date from, how many years?
From when we started.
We hit that number one time.
Since, since a million? We'll, we'll get that for you.
Yes.
It's in the annual report.
Yeah.
That we put together. So that's an easy number for us to get.
So Michelle, if I missed, where's the 16 million dollars that's been put back toward the sewer plant? Remember, we started doing back in 2008?
Yes, we have that in cash and CDs in various banks. So it's a fund balance.
Okay, alright.
Um.
It was listed.
I didn't, well, I'm.
The, the last.
I'm just going right over it. I'm sorry.
The last part on wastewater capital on page 22. We're doing a few relay sewer mains. We're very lucky. Our sewer department's doing some of these. But most of our ARPA money has, is also going to sewer. And then we're putting 22.1 million in the wastewater treatment plant. And these other smaller projects is just to keep our sewer plant going until we get the construction of the other one done. So an interesting statistic on capital improvements, we looked, finance looked at what we have finished. It's not what we have in progress, because we have several million in progress. But in the last three years, what we've actually made capital assets is $8 million. So in the utility fund in three years, we have an $8 million investment in capital.
Wow.
And this is from water line replacement, sewer line replacement, pumps, improvements we've done at the water plant. And we probably have 3, 4 million dollars in construction and progress going for fiscal year 24. We serve 8,946 water customers with inside our city, 8,806 sewer customers. And we have 5,000, she has 2468 outside in city water customers, 1,129 in Calixburg and 1,400 in Westwood. Anybody have any questions on anything for utility fund?
Page 23, go over to Ashland Bus System Fund. This accounts for the city's transportation system, which is federally subsidized.
23.
By the Federal Transit Administration. This year's budget is 1.7 million. The fund balance in fiscal year 23 was 162,000. There's no debt in the bus system. Fiscal year 25 salary is budgeted at 1.4 million. Operating expenses are 347,000. FTA grant operating is 510,000. FTA capital grant 635,000. Kentucky Department of Transportation grants are 63,000. We currently are working on advertising for the bus system and plan to use interns for this marketing. We're planning to expand bus routes and have a public hearing almost in June.
Yes.
And some of the route.
That excites me.
Public hearing.
Some of the route changes will actually take us up to Walmart in the county and turn us around. And that'll get, you know, there's a lot of King's Daughters people has doctors out there, that, you know, people that are working out there in that area. And it will also run the 29th Street route and the cross town route will run every hour. So it'll be no longer three hours to go turn around and go somewhere.
Thank you, thank you.
And just to be clear, the majority of this is funded by the federal government?
Yes. You all are contributing 510,000 to this. And we've had no transfers in several fiscal years because of federal, extra federal funding that we received during the COVID period. So this is the first budgeted year that we're doing the 510,000.
If you can turn to page 24, go to the Recreation Fund. This fund is accounts for the city's park system, including Central Park, Dawson Park Pool, AK Steel's Park, Wendell Banks Park, and various other small parks. Fiscal year 25 budget is 1.7 million. And fiscal year 23, the head unrestricted fund balance of a negative 1.5 million. This year's budget salaries are 1.2 million. Operating expenses are 516,000. And it's, currently Dawson Pool is in the process of major upgrading. And it's estimated that the fund cost will be $784,000 on it. And in parks in the last three years, there's been 3.3 million in capital assets.
So $3 million worth of park improvements.
The last three years.
And that does not include the investment in Dawson.
Turn to page 25, Ashland Cemetery Fund, accounts for the city cemetery.
I'm sorry, the Parks Fund, we transferred that 1.7 million dollars to them, right? For their, that's their revenue.
The cemetery revenue expected 1.21,000, expenses 427,000, which revenues are insufficient to meet expenses, which will have a deficit of 306,000. Unrestricted fund balance in fiscal year 23 was 1.8 million. There is no debt. Salaries are 331,000. Operating expenses 96,000. And there's no capital outlay this year. Page 26 is the parking garage fund. This accounts for the city's parking garage. Revenues are budgeted at 24,000, while expenses are 200,000, which will give us a deficit of 175,000. The unrestricted fund balance in fiscal year 23 was a negative 148,000. Salaries and benefits 130,000. Operating expenses 69,000. And there's going to be no capital outlay this year for that fund.
I assume there's no capital outlay because it's all been in this past year, right? All that upgrade.
How much money have we lost on the garage since we start, got it?
Fiscal year 23 is 148.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah.
It's probably be about the same, so 300,000.
Comes out of the general fund, doesn't it?
Yes.
Page 27, Conference Center Fund. This fund accounts for the conference center engineering, architecture, and construction expenses. This year's budget is 12.5 million. The revenue is probably based on state appropriation. There's no debt and the capital outlay is 12.5 million this year. And page 23 will be the last fund, the capital purchase improvement fund. Budget this year is 6.3 million. This counts for financial resources to be used in acquiring, constructing, and maintaining capital guidance for the general fund. Fund balance in fiscal year 23 was 4.8 million. There's no debt, no salary. On page 29, it's a list of the fiscal year 25 capital outlay. A few of them are Storm Sewer Line and Beverly Boulevard for 150,000. Finishing up the Winchester Avenue traffic and parking realignment for 3.3 million. Pre patrol cars for 228 million, I mean, sorry, 228,000.
Ah.
Wow, the crowd really went up.
These are Ferraris.
And 350,000. Are there any questions?
I, I have to mention the cemetery fund, I'm sorry. Obviously, we all love the cemetery, and I have no solution for that. But, you know, we have to think about what we stomach there, right? I mean, if it's 300,000 dollars right now, at some point in the future, it's going to have to be looked at. It's, I mean.
Yeah, I agree.
We all love the cemetery. It's literally a museum. I mean, it's, it's awesome. But.
We've been talking about maybe doing some marketing to get people and using some of the interns again, because we got some smart college.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's not a bad idea. But, I mean, we've, we're at 300,000 dollar loss in a year.
We got it, Commissioner. I got it down as a, as a takeaway when I saw that number. I use some type of analysis and options on that. And I'll, I'll get something to you formally, some type of recommendation.
I mean, yeah, because our, our rates competitive, I don't know what they offer.
Wait, as Robin mentioned, we do have some interns actually looking and doing some research for us from Gattin Business School. And they are actually also looking at some, actually doing some marketing for us. So.
Yeah, I'm not saying that the cemetery should be a profit center, but.
No, no.
The number goes up every year, it seems, about.
Yeah. And that comes out of the general fund as well.
Yes.
And that is a great point, Commissioner, because all these funds that, you know, do not have.
Balance?
Yes. It severely restricts our liquidity in our general fund. And it is an issue.
Yeah.
Is that the budget presentation?
Can I ask you a question though for a minute? So when I was going through the big loop here, on parking fees, I looked at what you recommended on here. Is that because of the new parking that's going to be downtown? Is that because of the new parking that's going to be downtown?
Commissioner, thanks for this question. So, part of the RFP, if I go through it chronologically. So, we had known always that we had to redo parking enforcement downtown. When we took out the pay, the pay meters, we did have parking enforcement going on. We could chalk the tires. You all remember, it's either a Supreme Court or a-
Perks tires, yeah.
District Court, that that was violating property rights. So we had to stop doing that. So enforcement pretty much stopped and then you see the roosters. We came up, the staff came up with a plan that would support the kiosks that we're putting in. You've seen the two that are in the garage right now. And when we were moving forward with that, and we were pretty comfortable with the rates that we were doing, we were in the process of talking to the different businesses to see what their feeling was. Of course, the businesses downtown are in full-throated support of this because the roosters affect their business and they do that. As part of the request for proposals on the Conference Center, in an effort to at least address the possibility of increased revenue, we put that in as an option on the RFP to see if that could be professionally managed to increase or to maximize, maximize revenue there. And we're currently in a state with AP3, the group that you all agreed for us to continue to negotiate with. And we're doing a cost benefit analysis on if it's going to be better for somebody outside to manage that for us or for us to manage it internally. It gets a little bit more complex because we're also potentially talking about parking with the Conference Center. And so those are tied together also. So, to answer your question, Jim has been working on a ordinance that'd be an all-encompassing ordinance that would talk about fees, fines, enforcement, how it correlates with the Conference Center estimated so that we can start enforcement. And we intend to start enforcement as soon as the project's done downtown. So we estimate, if that's going to be done downtown portion only, we estimate that we'll start doing enforcement in June or July. But we really can't until we have that ordinance done. So it's, there's a lot going on with the Commissioner right now, but it is one of our higher priorities to get done.
I'm sorry.
I just wondered if, when I saw this number, if you were using that and if you'd progressed anymore on-
It's just a swag, to be honest with you. That number is-
Because it's a big number from what actual was, but I know we've got everything.
Right. If you remember, what we originally had from T2 was an insane number. We're like, wow, that'd be awesome if that's what it was. Catherine Utzinger had done some, some of her own estimates. And I think that's roughly the number we used or a little bit less.
We used her number, exactly. Because we, you may have no idea.
So we felt that that was much more realistic on that.
Also, that, this enforcement includes South Ashland Route as well. Is that still in the-
It should, right?
It does, yeah.
I remember when we had talked about it originally with T2 and that, and the zones and all that stuff. I know that South Ashland is still in.
I guess where I'm stumbling is I don't think we have a kiosk over there, so.
We still have, we still have ordinances over there. We've got 10 floors, but also residential parking areas that takes us out of the downtown district. So it's, it's pretty widespread.
I thought so, that it wasn't just downtown.
Yeah, I remember, we talked about, yeah, it has to be.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Tony or Michelle or?
No.
One quick thing. There used to be an old commercial where people were sitting around at a table and they're thinking of ways to save money. And they say, what about this? So, these binders, I love them, I use them, the big ones. But when I look at them, I think about what you all go through to put these together. And I'm open here, but it's just an idea. If we, if you all made one electronic version that we can access, would that help?
Well, maybe some of us would like to have this. So if you want to just take a vote and I'll have this, so I can carry it around and refer to it. Yeah, and if you want the electronic-
I like this for the purposes of reviewing it. Once I reviewed it, I don't mind to hand it back over and let you recycle it. If we have an electronic copy.
I just, I just see all those binders and I think of how much work that is, but.
Well, I do, a lot of, like, we got one yesterday online. But this big thing, I like to have.
I like, I like.
We have both of them, so.
Yeah, so.
Well, if they, if it's being used in this way, that's fine. No, no, that's fine. If you guys are using it, that's fine.
No, it's, it's no problem to have an electronic. It saves us in storage later.
Well, don't do both. I'm trying to save work here.
Well, no, we actually- It's already been.
I used an, we used an intern last year to take a lot of our older financial records and make them electronic where we wouldn't have to keep all these copies because the city, so we use interns to help us keep like audits and stuff electronic. So we don't have, I mean, there's no storage, so.
Yeah.
We get towards electronic anyway.
Kind of getting a good Commissioner of the Day award. She said I thought we were getting a certificate.
Good Commissioner of the Year.
Mayor Commissioners, I apologize for giving to you this morning. I didn't finish this until last night. So please accept my apologies. There are five requests for pay adjustments for employees based on directors and one recommendation from me. You'll notice that in the past, we discussed pay issues in executive session. And they're supposed to be discussed, and I'm not sure when that changed, but they're supposed to be discussed publicly. On the top of each one of those is a employee number beside the name. You'll see the recommendation from the director. You'll see my recommendation on the five. And Mayor, I'm not sure how you want to go about this. If you want to take a break, again, I apologize for not getting to this to you sooner. One is one that, one employee that we discussed in the past, if you all wanted to discuss at budget time. And the other four are from directors' recommendations to me.
Well, Senior Manager, I think, if you don't mind, I'd like to have, take a break to allow the Commissioners to review this document at the very least. And then we'll go from there. Let's take 15 minutes, is that okay?
Works for me.
Will that be good?
Yep.
Okay. 15-minute break? Thank you all. And we'll be back shortly.
All right, folks. We're going to dabble back in and we're going to finish working on the budget work session.
Correct. Based on our review, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the city manager's recommendation for employees two, three, four, and five and amend the budget ordinance.
Okay, then we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I meet the standard there, Mr. Wheeler?
Sounds good to me.
All right. As corporate counsel, we have green light.
Can you repeat that mermaid?
Absolutely not. That's why we have the tape.
Okay. Just real quick comments. First off, this is my last budget session and I want to personally thank Mr. Grubb, Ms. Beech, and the Finance Department for all they've done for me as a commissioner, then as mayor, to help me understand our finances better and to always try to make the best decisions by giving me as much information as possible to the nth degree, sometimes if necessary. I value your professional relationship and your friendship and it's going to be tough not seeing you all next year at this time, although I'm sure for you, budget time's not the most fun time to be with us, but it's important to our citizens in our city that we get this done and I know that we will continue to be in good hands with you all leading the way in the Finance Department. So, thank you from me personally.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments, folks, at this point? It sounds like...
On to new business?
On to new business.
All right. Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Amending Section 2 of Ordinance Number 68, Series of 2023, Previously amended by Ordinance Number 73, Series of 2024," which is commonly known and referred to as the FY 2023-2024 Budget Ordinance of the City of Ashland.
Summate.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Fixing the Tax Levy for the Year 2024, Payable in the Year 2025 on the Bank Deposits Franchise Tax for Revenue Purposes by the City of Ashland."
Summate. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Fixing the Regulatory License Fee at 4% of the gross receipts from the sale of alcoholic beverages within said city during the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, as authorized and imposed by Section 24 of Ordinance Number 8, Series of 2021, known and cited as the Alcoholic Beverage Control Ordinance for the City of Ashland. Such proceeds to be used to reimburse the city for expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages therein.
Summate. Second.
Any discussion?
I have just one comment about that. We've talked about this before and it's, I know there was a change with that a couple of years ago. I'd be interested to know what that number looks like compared to what it was before two years ago. But not right now.
Gross receipts.
I'm sorry?
Your talk to gross receipts.
Okay. I don't think so.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Amending the Authorized Positions List of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 31, Series of 2023, as previously amended to add three firefighters in the Department of Fire and to add one sergeant and one school resource officer and reduce the number of police officers by one in the Department of Police.
Summate.
Any discussion?
Explain.
So, we have, we've been blessed with the pain of the school resource officers, which is now up to how many, Chief?
It will be nine.
Be nine. There's not supervisory oversight on those officers and it's really, what the SROs do is very specialized and different from normal road officers, although they are all certified police officers. We have not gotten to the point of, even before you all approved the four additional officers a couple of years ago, we've not been able to get to that full limit. To be very honest, what I had wanted to do was still to approve or recommend approval for the sergeant and keep our authorizations the same, knowing that we'd have pay lag every year, but it's just, it's not legal to do that because what happens when we do get everybody hired and then we're $100,000 off budget. So, what this does is it allows oversight of that very specialized skill. These are still, again, they're all certified police officers. When this individual is going from school to school and ensuring that the SROs are doing what they're supposed to be doing, he's also can do law enforcement during his...
So, I just want to be clear to the public, we are not reducing the police force.
In essence, in reality, no.
Okay. That's moving one body to another. Okay. That's all, I wanted to make sure we weren't, I wasn't going to say yes to that.
Yes, that's right.
Strange way to rule.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Amending Article 20 of the Agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Ashland City Police Members Fraternal Order of Police, Ashland Lodge Number Three, as adopted by Ordinance Number 193, Series of 2021, and amended by Ordinance Number 100, Series of 2022, Ordinance Number 120, Series of 2022, and Ordinance Number 75, Series of 2023.
Summate. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Amending the Salary Chart of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by Ordinance Number 31, Series of 2023, as previously amended.
Summate.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Authorizing a 4.6% Increase for All Members of the Policeman's and Firefighter's Pension Fund to be Paid from the General Fund."
Summate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Providing for the Regulation of Gathering, Disposing, and Destruction of Garbage, Rubbish, and Related Waste Materials, and Fixing Fees Therefore, Establishing the Division of Solid Waste, Establishing Sewer and Water Rates, Cap Fees, Installation Charges, Service Charges, Industrial Pretreatment Charges, Penalties and Interest, Providing a Penalty for the Violation of this Ordinance, and Repealing Ordinance Number 36, Series of 2023, Previously amended by Ordinance Number 85, Series of 2023."
Summate.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other business?
Just an update. Mark was able to find, Commissioner, due to your question, since 2019, there's been 32,000 feet of water line replacement.
Okay.
And then I'm tracking two hard do outs of IOU options on reducing the cemetery revenue insufficiency and the grocery receipts comparison over the last couple of years. Those are the two takeaways that I have. Was there anything else that I missed?
Mr. Grayson, also too, we'll have that updated on the website that shows all the lines that were placed since fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Mark.
13,000 foot since when?
2019.
And kudos to Susan for getting all these ordinance together.
I know. Right. Yeah. Salam islam.
Okay. Any other discussions of anything? Well, this time I'm going to turn to the audience. Thank you all, on behalf of our commission, for getting everything together for this budget and making sure it meets the needs of your departments and, of course, our citizens. It's been an honor to work with you all in budget process and I know our commission is very grateful that we continue to do great things for our citizens with the limited amount of funds we do have. And I think we've gone a long way in a short amount of time, but it's not because of us, it's because of you. So, thank you. All right. Anything else? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Summate.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Folks for adjourned. Thank you.